Welcome, everyone. First of all, I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Any emergency modifications to the agenda?
Not that I know of.
Public comments, I think, unless anyone would like to speak right away, that what we'll do is, similar to what we did the last budget meeting, was if you have a question, raise your hand. Participate, and obviously, we'll get you. Payne had a wonderful idea, it's like, "Oh, I should've given people my, they could ask me questions from home," but I think everyone's watching other things tonight.
I'm just making sure it's turned on.
Yeah, the view is on again, it's the first episode. Okay, I'm gonna do just a recap of, the last time we talked, it was pretty much personnel-driven. We were looking at, well, we did a little history, all that, but we were really looking at our expenditures for classified and certificated and administration. So what we're trying to look at tonight is the other side, the non-personnel. And that's what, Andy, 18% or 20% of our budget?
It varies between 14% and 16% of our budget. So typically, personnel is 84% to 86%, and non-personnel being the remainder.
So where shall we begin? Did you want to follow this?
Sure.
Continue, you sort of had these three parts.
Yeah, so I'll just jump in, we'll skip number one unless there are any outstanding questions from last meeting, that was really the first phase of this, was if there were any topics continuing on from last month. I know at that meeting, we discussed personnel quite a bit, we discussed the funding mechanism, but we didn't actually get a chance to really dive too much into the individual personnel at sites, or those sorts of things, and that's one of the reasons why the second part of the discussion was me having personnel and expenditures but for standalone programs. So we'll get into that in a moment, but were there any outstanding questions from our last meeting? Okay, so we'll hop into, we have a few different departments that I pulled out that we can walk through. First one is the maintenance and operations budget. I did receive a couple of questions on a few of these different items, and so if it's okay as we go along, I'll just point out the answers to some of the questions that have been presented before the meeting, as well as feel free to ask any along the way, of course. So with maintenance and operations budget, a few things to know about this one, as you can see, about $2.3 million, $2.4. The classified support salaries, the 2,200 object code, that first line item, is including all custodians, grounds, and maintenance positions for the district.
And how many people is that about?
We have two grounds, two maintenance, and then we also have about 13 or so custodians, many of whom lower part-time.
But it does not include our, like Russ and Craig?
Correct, so Russ and Craig would be next line down, they're supervisors and administrators. The clerical technical staff is Kathleen. I honestly don't know who the 2,900 is, do you mind looking that up as we go through?
Yeah.
3,000, just the benefits that go along with those staff, and then you'll see, jumping into 4,300 is, we've itemized each of those expenditures for all departments later on in the packet, but you can see, obviously, a pretty significant amount of money spent on, and this would be cleaning supplies, this would be repairs, this would be the, yeah, consolial supplies, actual tools and equipment for the department.
Does that include things like toilet paper and paper towels?
Exactly, exactly, yeah, all consumables, which Waxy is our primary vendor for that, as well as our pool cleaning chemicals, and then when we're doing a repair, you know, because we have our labor as part of, you know, our staff, majority of our repairs are performed with materials under $500, and so therefore, it'd fit into this line item as well. In the 5,000s, you'll see, obviously, far and way the largest number is in that 5,500 object code, the operations and housekeeping, that's simply utilities. So that is item, or detailed out at a later page, between electricity, gas, et cetera, but our utilities are included as part of maintenance and operations.
So that might be, so answer me, or maybe everyone, is that something, like, so you and I briefly spoke, I think about 350,000 of that is electricity?
Yeah, so actually, if we jump in a little bit further to our pages, it's on page eight of your materials. About halfway down the page, you'll see the, starting at 5,500, and working your way down, 5,501, 02, 03, 04, those are the utilities. So electricity, we currently are budgeted for $370,000 for this year's electricity across the district. Water, you'll see that we have reduced that from adopted budget, we actually, until two years ago, were averaging about $170,000 a year in water bills. As you, I'm sure, recall, we did significantly cut back our watering about 18 months ago. As a result, last year, our water bill was, we were on pace for about $95,000, came in a little bit above once we had a rollover month, but about $100,000 for last year. We have increased watering a little bit this year, if you recall, back in August, we did begin watering during the summer a little bit earlier than we did last year, and so water bill is still considerably less than where we were two, three years ago.
Can I go back on a question? So the 4,300 category?
Yeah.
So that's, why, textbooks are categorized in the same category as toilet paper.
Correct, correct, in the same.
Is that what everybody does, or?
Yeah, so.
I mean, that doesn't make sense to me when our mission is education, right?
Consumables, consumables, right?
Yeah, so the 4,300 category is materials and supplies, so one of those may be a little more material, either a supply, but, yeah, in fact, actually, we have our, you know, those water jugs are actually charged to the 4,300 object code as well. So things from some of our custodial to, you know, water builders.
Everything makes total sense to me except for the textbooks.
Well, so textbooks actually would be more likely to fall to 4,100, so if you go, if we jump back to page eight. Yeah. If you jump back to page eight, textbooks themselves would actually be 4,100. 4,300, though, will have almost anything that a teacher might be reimbursed for in their, yeah, consumable in their classroom, would be a 4,300, but textbooks, if that was specifically what you're asking about, would be a separate line item.
Okay, great, and then I see 4,200 as other books and reference materials. So, looks like there's a question.
Yes.
Just a quick question about the 4,300.
Yeah.
I saw from the adopted budget, it's $735,000 to $1.167 million, it's an increase, what would, what justifies the second interim increase in adopted budget when the actuals are only half of what we've adopted? Does that make sense?
Do you want to give some feedback?
We had a huge carryover amount from the VC Innovates. So that will account for part of that, and then donations as well.
Is that money that has to be spent in that category from the VCO, is that categorical funds that would have to be spent for specific things that we have to spend money on?
The VC Innovates, yes, the donations, no.
We had a three-year grant from VC Innovates, right? The VC Innovates was about a three-year grant, so we were purchasing some of it last year, some of it this year, and some of it next year. So I think what, once the plan was, here's what we're buying this year, then that money flows through, is that right?
Yeah.
But that's a good question, because, yeah.
Yeah, so the two budget categories that you do see most movement in throughout the year is 4,358, and that's why we do have those fully detailed out. I know, I apologize for the number of pages, but I do know there's been a lot of interest in those two categories, but, yeah, the reason for the change in 4,300 is primarily the CTE, which remember, we actually have two separate funding sources, VC Innovates and the CTE incentive grant, and together, those are well in excess of $300,000, and they cannot be spent on personnel. A separate funding source for personnel, we actually bill directly to the county, so some of our CTE staff are being, technically, they're employees of the county while on our site for that section, but, yeah, VC Innovates would be, or CTE would be a huge explanation for that.
And where would those people show up, under professional services?
The CTE staff who are paid by the county are paid directly by the county, and they're not showing up on our books, so. With the exception, actually, of Kim.
Kim has one section that's billed out to the VCO.
Yeah, so we do have Kim Hoy, because she was the only CTE staff member who was full-time previously, and by taking a CTE section, it could jeopardize her ability of benefits, that we actually are paying for her, and then we're billing back.
The choreography?
Yeah, exactly.
And Nayima, Nayima?
Nayima.
Houston, there's another teacher at Noradoff. So there's two teachers with two sections, and they get paid through us, but we bill the county. And so that money comes in as a donation, that's what.
So remember, we've talked about before, how that donation term on the revenue side is a bit misleading, because it really is actually donations, as well as anything that we charge back to other entities. So sometimes that charge back might be to the Meramone PTO, when we are the ones that actually are doing the payroll for their after-school program. Also, there are times where we're charging back to the county staff for CTE or for other purposes, where we're paying the staff member, we charge the county, they reimburse us, and the revenue for that reimbursement comes in, it's unfortunate, but it's the way that the state has it coded, is as a donation.
So my question for the board is, so I would get back to the 5,501 electricity. In my mind, I think, okay, I'd like to come back to that, or make a note of it, and say, are we going to think about solar in the future? So the point of, in my mind, of looking at the budget, is to find those things that make us want to have conversations about what our choices are, and why we're making those choices, and, you know, are we choosing to maybe have extra hours of a college counselor versus lower-class sizes, or, you know, this is giving us the opportunity to start talking about our priorities. So I don't know.
I would definitely agree, I think that's something we need to look at. I think over time, you know, technology changes, and is it time now? Is it cost-effective for us at this point in time? I don't know, we should definitely look at it.
Payne, are you saying specifically solar?
Solar, yeah.
So do we have, when do we have, so that's the question, so now we say that, when do we have a conversation about that, or when do we make a decision? What?
A roof to put it on.
But one of the things we talked about with Measure J was to know those things ahead of time, just like, we've got to fix the roof, oh, we fixed the roofs, but we didn't know that we were going to do solar, and so it is part of that plan, if we're planning on solar, maybe we're talking about parking lot solar, so it doesn't have to be, you know, those are the things we at least need to project, so that we're making wise decisions.
Yeah, enough to know what the club thinks about their parking lot solar, seems like it's great.
Yes, though, not that particular business.
Didn't go great?
No.
Well, I think that the answer is, you may have the conversation whenever you want to have the conversation, and like anything else, I think it's incumbent upon Andy and me to bring quality information to you first, okay? I'm not sure what that is, because I've received so many pitches on solar for so many years, but I do think, and I just, you know, being forthright about this, I have my son-in-law is in the business, he wouldn't do anything here, but, so I've learned a little bit about that, through him. And I would say that some of the negative impressions in the earlier years about solar are starting to dissipate, I think it's a better level now of quality control than it was, I can, I remember vividly now, 30 years ago, when I got my first pitch on it, and I don't think we, I don't think we generated one term of solar from something that was done before I got there, but we had a lot of leaks, you know, so, but now, it's just different. So I think the answer really is, you know, it's not likely to impact the 2017-18 budget, but it sure does do two things. One, there's an intersection with Measure J and roofing, no question, and, you know, we have major projects on the books, right, for the summer, so we sure would want to know that whatever we're eventually planning to do, and I know Ron and others are looking at what that's going to look like, we want to be sure that if the board has a quality conversation, we do the roofs, if the board has a quality conversation in late 2017 into 18, or whatever, we want solar, we want to be sure that whatever we did could accommodate that answer, right? So that would be part of, in my opinion, would be part of our research, to be sure that whatever roofing we felt we needed to do, to pick up on what Shelley said, to be sure that we have the infrastructure that works, right, for heavy rains, or whatever, that it does not obviate the possibility of having solar.
I think it is, because I've actually met with a few vendors already, or a few solar firms. What schools are doing far more frequently, putting them on roofs, are putting them as shade structures, either over, you know, lunch areas, or in the parking lots. And that also is, you know, has a separate DSA issue than potentially putting on roofs, you know, and depending on if it's a parking lot, you have less accessibility issues than if it's over a building, you know, in the middle of campus, where DSA could be more involved in accessibility improvements to that path of travel to that site. So, yeah, we certainly are seeing more on the shade structure side. I will say that Prop 39, remember, that's been a pot of mine that we've held on to, to make sure that we do it in conjunction with the broader plan, that would be something that a lot of districts are using that funding for currently, its PV, and that it is a, certainly a, you know, great use of the funds to be able to bring in, again, potentially shade structure, or other help on that front, and anything we do to drive down electricity, of course, we know does actually free up general fund dollars, so even though we can't use Measure J on staff or salaries, the extent to which we do things that free up dollars is obviously a very big benefit. So I've shared with some of you, I'll make sure that all of you know this, as well as for those in the audience, let me finish this one thought, and then you can hop in. For electricity, we actually, it's a very misleading stat, but I'll still throw it out there, and then I'll give you the caveats, we actually have either the highest or the second-highest electricity usage or cost per student in the county. Now, three reasons, I believe, I believe that, one, when, you know, you look at our, age of our facilities, and knowing how energy inefficient a number of our rooms are, that certainly plays a big role compared to districts like Oxnard, or even the East County districts that all really sprung up, the buildings and facilities sprung up in the past 20, 30 years, so that makes a big difference, having 80-year-old buildings compared to 20. Also, Ojai Valley is hot, far hotter than Oxnard Plains, and so, you know, the fact that we do have, yeah, the need for air conditioning far more often, and, yeah, some sites even have air conditioning in San Paula and elsewhere. And then the third reason is, when you have fewer students per site, you know, to air-condition the library at a high school of 700 is roughly the same to air-condition a library of a high school of 1,400 or 3,000. So, you know, those sorts of lack of economies of scale also come into play. So it is still a bit of a catching stat, though, that we do have, you know, a very high percent per dollar of our funds go toward electricity and utilities in general.
Just a quick question, wondering about the electricity, we're wondering if we have the systems and structures put in place. I know that the baseball fields and the softball fields, those games are scheduled for 3:30 in the afternoon, rather than 6 o'clock at night, and I know the stadium, I know, I've heard in the past, I'm not sure what the cost is to light that stadium every time you flip them on and warm them up, I'm wondering if the systems and structures aren't already in place to minimize the use of stadium lights for nighttime practices, or even earlier afternoon games, if you're, I'm just wondering if that's something that, I wonder how much it costs to turn on those lights for two hours, and how, what a big, what a big, I'm not saying it's a huge amount, but I'm wondering if there is any things available for just using our current system that could reduce the costs in future years, so.
Similarly, as long as we are addressing the generation side, we should probably look at the consumption side, right? So the whole thing about LEDs throughout the district, we're going to have updated HVAC in a number of places, and so theoretically, they will be more effective, more efficient.
Right.
So it'd be interesting to know what potential recovery might be here.
Right, absolutely.
And I know a lot of our camps, sorry. I know a lot of our campuses have, a lot of, Myers-Oaksus uses a lot of natural light, so I know there's these small window films that you can put on, tint it out, that block out a lot of the ultraviolet light, or something like that, so maybe, just small, I'm not sure what the cost-effectiveness of that is, but to reduce the AC costs that we do occur when it's 95 or 100 degrees in the valley during the school year, I'm wondering if there are small little steps that we can implement, rather than, I mean, my, most of the, most of the buildings that I've been in have timed lights, motion sensor lights, which is, I mean, goes a long way for the careless teacher that leaves their lights on, or something like that, but just to.
Is your blinds pilot project related to all this?
Yeah, certainly, you know, we do know that while there may be some more efficient ways to limit or, you know, modify the heat rays that are coming in, that there's no question that the blinds do assist with heat, as well as help with just greater control over light.
I doubt this is cost-effective, but I know the upper buildings at Topa Topa, 26, 27, 28, they have skylights, so a lot of the times, the teachers don't even have to turn on the lights. What are they called?
Solar tubes. Solar tubes, they're tubes that allow, with prisms on the bottom, so that they spread the light.
Yeah.
So, and they were put in place specifically to eliminate the need for lights, the problem was that they didn't put the blind on it, so that when you wanted to turn out the lights, you could never turn off the lights, because they didn't do that part, but, yeah, that would have been all.
But I mean, you know, depending on what we're doing on a roof, right?
Yeah.
And they made it, it's a huge difference, we don't use the lights in the computer lab, or the library, or several of the classrooms, the office, because we have those, we don't need the lights.
And I was thinking as well, we could look at the campuses, not as a whole, but individually, because some, solar might make a lot of sense, others maybe it doesn't.
Sure, sure.
Absolutely. Like, when you talk about a structure for eating under, Matilla needs one, but it's covered with oak trees back there, so it wouldn't get much sun.
A less, yeah, right.
Yeah, a little less now, yeah.
You know, as we have this conversation, I just wonder how we're staging to be able to maximize our use of, you know, lead and other environmentally friendly technologies, you know, I mean, I just wonder, does Ballford-Bady have expertise in that, or should we bring in a consultant early? It just feels like the ship will leave this station, and, you know, we'll be asking these questions, like, I know, I just happened to be talking to a guy who does HVAC stuff, who's just doing a huge project at the inn, where inn is converting everything to those ductless AC for each room. So the question being, would we be better off having ductless for each room, than have a motion sensor as well, so that any given room is only going to be getting AC when someone's in the room? And, you know, I mean, that's not going to happen unless we somehow get out ahead of it, because that's such a big decision.
Yeah, in Europe, if you, you know, in order to run the heater and the air conditioner, you have to put your room key in.
Really?
So when you leave, you have to take your room key with you, it shuts it off. And it's also connected, if you open your window, it shuts off. So, I mean, that's got to be incredibly expensive, to get that kind of system in there, so it must be worth it to them, now whether it's worth it to us is a different matter, but. Now, there are companies that, I mean, Southern Cal Ed is now providing, they'll come in and replace lights, or give you.
Right, so we've already completed all the paperwork for that, it's over $1,000, or $100,000 value that we'll be receiving. We actually just got, I got an email a couple hours ago, we've been working on having Martha Lapine's room, K2 at Myers-Oaksus, is going to be the pilot room, they're looking, they were going to try to do it last week, and then the weather threw them off the week, from the week prior, but they will be piloting that room, changing out the bulbs and the fixtures with the new energy-efficient bulbs and fixture, and will allow, you know, teachers to come take a look at the room, and assuming that they approve, it will be a district-wide initiative funded by Silcalison.
And I have one more thing, just Ann's blinds project, Bronwyn Cole-Michels has those installed in her room. They are significantly better than a majority, a majority of the classrooms would have these, after opening it and closing them, and half mine are broken off, you know, it really is, the roller shades really do give you a much better coverage with, I think, I mean, it seems like they're durable and quality.
Right, absolutely.
That's a, I would say, may add an handy on energy consumption, if we're talking about energy consumption, I think that's really going to have, because a lot of teachers don't even use their blinds. If you look at some of the other rooms, they put cardboard over the windows in a couple of rooms, just because the blinds are so battered and broken, it's not worth repairing, it's just simpler to put, simply easier to put printer tape, or printer paper, or construction paper over the few places where the blinds miss.
And you'll eventually get to, like, LED lights for the stadium, right now, I know we just looked at that for our tennis courts, and they're not producing enough lumens right now, but they're working on it, so, you know, maybe by the time our next bulbs go, you know, that's something.
I was going to say, it seems important to think about each, I know this is difficult, but each classroom, or each building, because like, when I was in one building at Topa, I never even thought about the sun, because I was shaded by the trees, my classroom gets so hot, you can't touch the door, because it gets sun from 7 o'clock on.
Right.
So, you know, I think it's important to look at which is it south-facing, is it north-facing, is it?
Sure.
Where, what east-west, what is it doing, because it could make a very big difference, I mean, so a simple solution, like an awning, in our classrooms, would make a huge difference just in the consumption of energy, just for those rooms.
Right.
So I think that, too, is an important study that might need to be done, before we just do a blanket, okay, we've got to do all of that, I mean, there are lots of different things happening in all the classrooms.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's really, we're having a consultant come in who specializes in that, it might be in a big company like Ballford-Bady, but it also might not, I mean, people have special expertise, and they're worth their weight in gold, really, if they do the kind of, the kind of job you're talking about.
Although, I.
Exactly, exactly.
But I can tell you, it needs an awning.
Okay, we'll go out of the next room.
But I'm just saying, like, I had a parent who said, "I will pay for an awning, it's $1,000, I just need to know who will install it and what to do, I can't stand it, my child, it's too hot." And I was like, "Well, I don't know, don't even ask me how to make that happen," but it was really nice, he just wanted to pay for the awning, put it up, take care of business.
Is that current this year?
That was last year, yeah.
Does the first-grade classroom need one?
Should we move the first-grade classroom?
He did spend money on trees to put in front of my classroom, right? Yeah, what I'm saying is that there are simple solutions to some of the problems, that you don't need a consultant, and you, you don't need an energy audit, you just simply need to look at it and say, "Okay, so I'm going to spend $200 to put a tree that flowers and grows quickly, and we're good." It's a simple solution, so I don't think we should always think about the most complicated way of solving some of these issues, because there are really simple ways.
I was thinking a spaceship or something could be deployed to block the sun near.
Right there.
Like a World Cup, you know, right?
There you go, we would be very excited about that.
Even trees, I see Chuck back there, I'm sure that he can explain that even that is not always as easy as we'd like, and certainly in the past, you know, recent past, we were, had a real moratorium on any plant, you know, growth or installation, because we didn't have the, you know, water plan or water ability to maintain it, but.
He and I have already talked.
Oh, yeah. Great.
And for solar, I think looking at lease options as well, I don't know that they exist.
They do.
For schools or commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Actually, I've, I've heard that, that's not the way to go, but.
Right, I mean, I just know for our, you know, personally, when we could cut our electricity bill in half. And not, um, worry about it, um, that was a good choice, you know. It, it wasn't the best choice, would have been better if I had enough money to buy the solar system, but it was a lot better than what I had. So the question is, is it the best, maybe not, is it better than what we have, we should look at it.
Has anybody looked into grants for school districts with solar, are they out there, cause I have not.
Well, that's the Prop thirty-nine, right?
Well.
Well, Prop thirty-nine is far more, uh.
It's not as specific.
Yeah, uh, generic or general than, uh, than focusing on PV, but, um, yeah, we can look into it.
And we don't pay taxes, so we wouldn't.
Well, and so that was, you know, one of the vendors I've met with, they do, it's all lease, but they, um, exactly, there's that sort of option. But, uh, you, you know, they are able, they're able to get the tax incentives and that's what makes it worth it for them, is that they're, you know, it. It's a viable option because of the tax, uh, tax benefit to them. Well, I'm excited to, uh, hear this general interest in, uh, solar, so I will certainly, uh, bring to you some options in the future. And do some research on this.
I, you know, I had a question before we move on about the, about transportation costs and fuel costs. I was wondering, I know my program, um, the SEC at Nordoff has been able to partner up with the Ohio Trolley. Where, and my students fall in a specific type of category where they get charged twenty-five cents because of the ADA. Um, accessible use and whatnot, um, but I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity for the district to partner up with an Ohio Trolley. Who might be able to run an extra stop, right, you know, to pick up, you show your student ID. And all of a sudden you get from here to Matilla or from here to Nordoff, from one side of town to the other. Without relying on bus transportation, when it could, it could boost ADA. All of a sudden, students who missed their, the yellow bus might be more prone to show up to a class a few minutes late. If they know they don't have to walk or ride their bike or can't, parents can't drive them. I'm wondering if those community partnerships, if we shouldn't be really focusing on community partnerships within the, within the, um, within community partnerships.
That are.
Those are the best.
That are already established systems, you know, that we can't just kinda piggyback onto. Where maybe they charge us, maybe every time someone, a student charge, they, they give us a quarter. Or we, they charge us the ADA rate for a quarter for a student to get from one side of town to the other. And then all of a sudden we get the ADA for that student, which works out to be forty or fifty bucks a day, rather than losing it. I'm wondering what the cost, cost, loss, benefit would be to providing students more access with, uh, forming these community partnerships.
Well, and we do have, um, on page seven, we might as well, since you're talking about it, jump to that, that we have a transportation budget. And, um, one of the things that, and that's actually something that I had written down, um, MERV is, is the possibility of joining with the city. I know at one point they cut back on trolley service cause of the expense, so I'm just gonna have to make up numbers, you know. If the school district pays the city ten thousand dollars a year to add trolley runs. And we cut out a bus and a driver and insurance on that bus and, you know, it's a win-win for both situations. So it is a possibility, um, I also know, Andy, you had mentioned, um, that some districts are not even providing any transportation. Except for special ed.
Correct.
And at what point, I mean, our budget is six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's a lot of money that we could.
Seven.
Seven, it just says transportation budget at the top, is it the very?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Andy, how many, how many of those districts are there that are just do special ed?
And how big are they?
Uh, I only know of Seamy.
Right, there's only one, there's only one that we know of, it's, which is very big.
Yeah, Seamy's.
I don't know what the conditions were that caused them to make that decision, but as far as we know.
Cause I looked, I went online, I was like, I thought you're required to get students to school, but the state has.
And Moore Park High School, actually, I know Moore Park, um, unified, piloted, uh, the transition of the high school only. And I'm pretty certain that it had such negative feedback that they went back to providing full, uh, home to school for children as well, at the high school level. But the, one of the big challenges in, you know, parents of kindergarten, first grade, you know, how would, how do they feel about having their child on the trolley? With, you know, other members in the community.
But it was the students that are gonna, that, I mean, so I was, when I made that, when I was a student, I wasn't thinking kindergartners. But I was thinking the high school students and the middle school students who can navigate the system. Now maybe they sleep in till seven forty, they wake up and they don't see the need to come to school. If we can boost, if we can boost ADA from, I think we're at ninety-five percent right now, which is pretty good for a school to say. We can boost up to ninety-six percent, that's a hundred and sixty, you know, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for a general fund. Just by getting the, the one percent increase in ADA on our students that are already living in here. We're not talking about bringing more students in from Ventura or trying to attract them from Santa Paula to a magnet school. We're just talking about students in the community who are not coming to school for, and some are gonna be sick, your iPhone's gonna have a sick kid. But if we can increase that, just get those five, five extra students into the classes at Nordoff. And five or six more into Matilla, over the course of a hundred and eighty day school year, that's gonna make a, a fairly significant increase into, um, the general budget.
Do you know if that's an issue, are you speculating? Is it?
I would say I, I don't have data or proof of it, but if you talked, I, I bet a brief phone call to Amy Zuniga. Or possibly Jim Hall, uh, who kinda keeps track of the attendance, um, from our conversations. I, I believe there's a significant number of students that are not showing up to school for one reason or another. But that don't have anything to do with, uh, uh, health issues or anything else, so all you want on, on transportation.
Okay.
Anything else on the transportation budget that anyone had questions about?
Are we still down a driver?
We are, so we have Cindy Sloan, our transportation supervisor, the whole job that she was created to fill. Um, was really ideally actually not to be a driver at all, rather to be our first sub for the vans or buses, um, as necessary. Um, and we have not been able to fill the, it's about four and a half hour route, um, we've not been able to fill, and so she's always doing that. And because we do occasionally have other absences as well, she's actually having to go into an eight hour route in addition to doing her supervisor duties, dispatching duties. So, yeah, our transportation department is still, um, far leaner than we'd like it to be, two drivers.
How is she paid if she's doing all that work?
Um, she is the supervisor and administrator listed as twenty-three hundred for transportation, she's, um, salary.
Does she get additional money if she has to do all that additional driving?
I give her comp time, then try to find if there's any opportunity for her to go home after seven hours on a day where she doesn't have to do that, and she's doing that. She took her, I think, first vacation of the year, uh, right before the President's Week, and so we said that's comped out for, you know, the. Three hundred plus hours that we currently owe her. Yeah, no, she, uh, she's been absolutely incredible keeping the department afloat, um, with such.
So if you're looking for a job, go get your commercial driver's license.
We, we've offered to all of our current van drivers who don't have, cause the van drivers are paid at a lower rate, um, and they're not required to have their, uh, bus cert. Um, we've offered to any of them that we'd pay for their training to, uh, go be, you know, get certified, um, and we've not had any takers. We certainly done anything we can to, uh, recruit externally as well. Uh, Durham and Student Services who both have offices, I believe in Ventura, um, or Oxnard, but service Ventura as well. Um, will pay well, well more than us, they get five thousand dollar signing bonuses and they offer eight hour positions only. So, you know, when we're offering these split positions, you drive for two hours in the morning and then you come back five hours later and drive two hours in the afternoon. Um, with no signing bonus, it's really tough to get anyone.
Do you know what the certifications cost for?
Uh, less than a thousand dollars.
Would that be something maybe we wanna consider offering to a, a, a baseball coach or something like that?
A noon duty person.
Or say, yeah, anybody who's already working for the district, but, I mean, we pay a ton in athletic transportation. Uh, to get from here to Santa Paula, from here to Oxnard, from here to Port Wendy, for all of our soccer, swimming, baseball, softball. All those, I wonder if we should, if we could offer that same program to, uh, employees to drive sports teams. And help us save the district down the cost, the wear and tear on the.
That's the challenge, our, our current bus fleet, we have, uh, one bus that we purchased just a couple of years ago, we're actually leasing, you see the lease payment show up. Um, that, uh, would be serviceable, although it's used for special ed exclusively. Otherwise, our bus fleet is from ninety-three and ninety-five where the, you know, and they have four hundred thousand miles or so on them. So the reason that we aren't able to provide athletic transportation outside the valley is that we don't trust our buses to, to return.
I, my experience as a parent is that they get no bus help, they're, they're carpooling.
Yeah.
Right. So. Some of the larger, some of the larger teams, you know, that's.
Yeah, football does charter.
I know, as, as a swim team, I was a swim coach for three years and when you're, the dual needs where you're hiking everyone down to JV and varsity. Or competing in the same city, we always, you know, had to pay for the transportation. And I, I, but if you look at the athletic budget, this transportation is a very significant part of. Well, Andy might be able to answer that better, I don't know, to my impression would be the transportation for athletics is a significant portion of the athletic budget.
It certainly is, and part of it's actually shielded from our budget because it, uh, part of it gets funded by, uh, like gridiron and that sort of thing.
Right, so we're.
Yeah, but yeah, no question, it's expensive. I've been very interested in trying to find creative ways for us to enhance our fleet and then see if we can find a, uh, a way to actually get it staffed. Uh, haven't been successful with either of those, but, um, we've been in discussions with other community groups and other nonprofits, uh, in the valley. To see if we can, you know, enter into agreements with them to share a vehicle or even to, uh, you know, lease them the vehicle during the summer when we're not using them. We haven't found anything that's been financially viable to, the, uh, the cost on new bus is about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we really need three new buses, so it's about half million, um, and we just haven't been able to justify that expense with the current budget.
Absolutely.
Andy?
Yeah.
In each one of these budgets, it, there's a line for travel and conferences. What, can you explain what that is, just cause I know it's consistently there and I, I think if I was explaining it to people, it'd be nice to know. What is travel, what are, what falls underneath that?
So, uh, it could be a number of things, so first of all, anytime there's, um, uh, employee doing travel on behalf of the district. Um, Hank and myself are the only two employees that we do not submit reimbursement for, uh, travel within the valley, or I shouldn't say that. To my knowledge, there's no other employees, but we may have some other, uh, leaders who do. Uh, but other staff, if they're traveling be from one site to another, um, they do get that reimbursed. Um, certainly when they're driving down to the county office for an LCAP training or for, you know, a SST training, you know, that's compensable. Um, so that's gonna be one of the main things is we're reimbursing for travel on, uh, district business, um, and then conferences. So when people are going to the Google Summit conferences, that would be there, when I go to my, uh, you know, annual CASBO conference. Or when we've gone together to the School Service of California Conference, that would be charged there.
Andy, um, how did you create these sub, um, uh, views? These, these views of each of the particular budgets, like transportation, I see they, it's really general fund, right? So did you have to go there yourself, go into the general fund and pull out, it doesn't exist anywhere as transportation? I, I see like cafeteria happens to have its own.
Cafeteria happen, exactly.
Its own.
Absolutely correct, it's a separate, uh, fund, everything else is coming out of general fund and so, yeah, it's me doing particular queries and pulling things.
Cause I, from a transparency perspective, and to engage people in our community more in the budget. It would be so helpful to have a person be able to look at our budget and actually know, oh, this is what we're spending on transportation. Oh, this is what we're spending on whatever.
Right.
You know, because, you know, just looking at a general fund.
Sure.
And then, you know, like having in, insights like MERV or anyone else about, hey, we might be able to do this or that. Uh, it's, it's, it's unlikely to occur if you're merely looking at a gigantic.
No questions.
I'm not gonna, I was gonna say slush, not slush, but. A big fund, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you, um, Seamy Valley is the only district that I know of that has paid for software that is supposed to take the. You know, because again, I, the way I was able to get this is that Patty and her team and me occasionally are coding each of our expenditures. With a roughly twenty-seven digit budget string, and each of those digits have, you know, a meaning, you know, we talked about one of those, uh, groups, the object code. Another one is the fund, so again, general fund is zero, one, zero, so any general fund expense starts with that in the budget string. Object code comes fairly quickly thereafter, uh, or actually immediately thereafter for us. So you're able to get to it, but you have to know that, you know, twenty-seven digit string. Um, and I, I only know, like I said, one district, Seamy, that has paid for a software that will be able to manipulate that, those, you know. Ten thousand lines of data to make it a little bit more user friendly, I can check with them to see the cost and how, how much it's. How effective it is at doing that sort of thing, I, I personally don't know if you would be able to look at their software and be able to pull out transportation budget, but.
But are you saying that, that actually there is a way if you take the twenty-seven numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
You could actually know, if one of you guys were handed a, an expense, you go, okay, this is transportation. Cause I see two of four.
Exactly.
In the sixth, seventh and eighth digit.
Exactly, yep, absolutely.
So, that software probably works, then, I would think.
Yeah, it just is, uh, uh, no question, again, the data is there, it's how effective the software is at parsing it out and then having it become. You know, translatable, having someone be able to say transportation, being able to have it access to those particular, you know, unique.
So it sounds like you actually have to manually run a report to screen on that, on that digit to get these subcategories.
Correct, yeah, exactly, I read each of these.
Done, it just doesn't do it on its own.
Correct, and the public wouldn't be able to access that system, that's our internal financial.
For instance, or you could take our adopted budget and you could break it out by those categories.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, it just become a, um, um. Trying, I'm blanking on the word right now, stagnant, uh, I mean, it'd become a, uh, or static, uh, document, you know, as soon as it's created. Instant, you know, it'd be a snapshot at a time, there's no, you know, whereas Seamy with their software, you can go in and, you know, pull that information. Whenever, uh, you know, one wants.
Although having it, for instance, reported quarterly would be a step above having it, you know, all glom together.
Yeah, that could absolutely be done.
And how often are people going to look at those numbers?
Yeah, I can see a crowd.
Well, and that's the thing too, how much time. But then you look into the, are, are we asking for that in the future? Then what time does that take and then the value of their time versus the software?
If it's coded though, it shouldn't take a lot of time to just run it, I would think, I mean, you change your date parameters and just run the report, right?
So, um, a little bit more than that, bud.
Yeah, I got the impression that it was more scanning and reading and moving.
Yeah, and, and even as, uh, you know, non-ideal as this format was, it is coming from their system. It's still actually required by manipulation to have it even be this readable, uh, theirs is even less so. Um, but can be done, um, there is no free option or any option though, that, yeah, either wouldn't require staff time. Or, or investment in software, but both those are, are options, and I'll look into, uh, the cost of the software.
Okay, so before we move, I just wanna see if there's any more questions on the maintenance and operation budget. Where we talked about solar and transportation, where we talked about the trolley.
And MERV driving, doing a lot of.
Any other questions on those?
You know, there, there was a point, um, about the water. And I had heard that there, uh, was the potential to perhaps poke wells in on some of our campuses. Um, that there's a water table, I don't know if we could do that or not do that, or if it would be cost effective to do that.
Actually, Andy and I have met with a person who has that theory, right? Uh, and he thinks that there could be some gain, long-term financial gain for the district. And have potential better access of water, uh, so, yeah, and I trust this guy's judgment on a variety of things, so.
So that's maybe another topic.
Isn't there a moratorium on wells?
Is there, right?
I thought I know why there was, I don't know if it's still in effect.
In the city of Ohio?
I think.
I thought it was the city.
Okay, cause he, I know he's talking at least in a couple of cases of not in the city. city.
Right, both. But, but he's also, his, his technology is a little different than a typical well, and that, that's his whole premise, is it's a deeper drill.
And if it's not in the city.
Tapping into, tapping in new streams that haven't been accessed before.
Correct, yeah, that's exactly right.
And if we would be subject to those regulations as a public entity?
Well, and you also, I mean, Thatcher put in some rainwater collection, and man, it, it was, they got to water so much of their, yeah.
So yeah, they're.
They picked it here.
Yeah.
No, but even last year, we had one good two-inch rain and they, I, you know, I always think of.
Well, it's amazing how much surface area.
The rain barrel, it's not going to hold much, but.
Right, well, you know, the, the ones I'm seeing put in at schools are, you know, five thousand gallons, so it is holding a decent amount. I've heard of a twenty thousand gallon, but five thousand I think is, what I'm hearing is more common. But yeah, it does not take much when you're talking about the whole square footage of a roof, being able to capture it and funnel in, you know, it's not just the barrel having an opening and capturing from there, it's, you know, it, I think half an inch, they say, can fill one of those easily with a, you know, pretty small roof it's capturing. I would say, just as we had an exciting and robust conversation around electricity and both opportunity for solar as well as for just energy enhancements, I'm certain we have the same opportunity on the water side. And I think I've discussed again at our board meetings, that we have actually been in discussions with the developer of the new senior living facility that's going to be developed off Roblar in Myers Oaks. He is actually getting his water offset that was required for his development by helping us have some energy, or some water efficiency enhancements at Nordoff and at Myers Oaks. So we are going to be seeing some savings by them coming in, and we're looking at both toilet and urinal fixture, you know, changes and the, um, change of a portion of the fixture to make it more water-efficient, as well as potentially helping us with some of our turf reduction that we're looking at.
I would avoid the waterless urinals if you can. Okay, next, school nutrition services budget, page four.
So this one, because it is a separate fund, is obviously the format is a little different, you're able to even see the percentage of the funds spent on individual areas. Obviously, not surprising, food is our, you know, highest cost in, in this fund, in this program.
What are the dues and memberships?
Dues and memberships, I've actually got that one.
We have to answer to that. For the environmental, which is the food thing? I have it right here if you.
We had thirty-five hundred dollars go to food school permits, County Ventura Environmental Health Division. We had twenty-five hundred dollars go towards software. Some of our software actually comes in as a membership, or as coded as a membership because it's a, you know, an annual renewal. We pay a hundred and forty dollars in a co-op membership contribution to the, I'm not even going to guess the acronym, but it's a super co-op with Ventura County Schools. And then a school nutrition association, a hundred and twelve dollar membership fee. Those are what made up that, that category.
And there was, wasn't there something, you know, like the food service workers have to be certified? Isn't that under there too? Or isn't there something like that?
I thought that was the first thing you said.
Oh, my, okay.
Um, the food service worker certification, no, I don't believe that actually is the name of these. The food school permits are the, you know, health department certifying that we pass health inspection in our kitchens. Which I will say, actually, recently I went on the county health department website, and you can see all of the restaurants that have been closed down for any period of time because of a health code violation. And there's actually four or five school districts that have had snack bars or other kitchens closed down for some period of time across this county. We're not one of them, so.
Excellent.
It's exciting.
I have a quick question about the cafeteria.
Yeah.
In my understanding, is that, so we get all this revenue, if we spend less, does that revenue go directly into our general fund? Or is that rolled over to the next year's, and, because what, what we see here is it's not costing our district a whole lot of money based on the funding sources for us. We basically break even by charging the students the three dollars a meal and the free and reduced lunch program and all the subsidies that we get. Now, is that question, things?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So actually, if you're looking at the revenue portion of this page, the fourth line down, the bottom line within revenue is other financing sources. That's actually a general fund contribution. So we currently, we are not meeting, revenue's not meeting expenditures and therefore we're, you know, in the red for this department. We're contributing sixty-five thousand dollars from general fund. So we'd have to first clear away that deficit. If we were able to have a surplus, which Suzanne did actually have us in the black for a number of years, she inherited a department that was well in the red, did a terrific job with being able to return us to the, the black. And then really, as we've talked about a number of times over the past couple of years, due to a number of circumstances, primarily due to the increased federal and state requirements around school meals, we're back to the red, which is a, you know, common across all districts, or majority of districts in the, the state and the county. So, right now, it's a general fund contribution. If they were back to the black as they were a few years ago, we had them hold on to that money because we know that this can be a wave that fluctuates. And so, when they were positive, they held on to that money, and that helped us survive the first year and a half or so of deficits in this program.
But if we were in the black, there would also be a question about whether it would be appropriate to use those monies for anything else, even if we could, right? Because, is the right thing to do to charge less for the meals than if we were in the black, right?
Right, right. Right, because we, because we, the, the federal and state revenues coming are very restricted around this purpose. And so the only way that we actually would be positive would be as a result of what we actually are charging for, you know, fee-paying students. And so, I would agree, if we saw a consistent pattern of us having revenues exceed expenditures, then the question would come of, you know, are we overcharging for our meals?
I, I also assume when you see the starting balance, that's a suggestion that when money's left over, it just stays in the fund at the bottom?
Um, right, so in years prior, you would've seen that number larger again, and I believe Laura explained this to me, because I wondered why we had a seventy-five thousand dollar general fund contribution last year and had a beginning balance this year, and I believe that's for our stores, right? That's for the actual inventory on hand. So that's actually not a cash starting balance, but rather an inventory on hand balance.
Is there any way that we could, I'm sorry to keep you on topic. Man, this kid's good.
He says you know everything.
Break it out site by site. I know Myers Oaks is the green school, they're using reusable silverware, where they're spending money on water and labor to wash the silverware rather than buying the plastic sports with a napkin in it, and the trays are reusable. I mean, we're serving, I think, what did we talk to, we're serving three hundred meals a day at Nordoff, or two hundred and fifty meals a day at Nordoff. Wondering if, if all sites shouldn't maybe go to the Myers Oaks model that's been proven by Janice Duncan's program and her leadership team to, you know, at least be more green. Now, cost-effective, I don't, I, I don't know. Is there a way to parse that number out from, like, which site is using, or to, what kind of savings Myers Oaks is seeing versus Topa Topa, who may not have adopted the same protocols or procedures that are.
Um, so, I appreciate you highlighting what Myers Oaks is doing. I think Mayor Monti is also doing quite a bit of the same. Both are absolutely exceptional programs, too, that I'd be very interested in replicating. Unfortunately, a lot of the reason why it's financially viable there to do even just some of the food sorting, food waste, you know, reduction, is because it's in the county, and the county waste management has an initiative to help offset the cost of the, you know, waste reduction that we're, we're seeing there. City doesn't have such a program, and so it would be more, we would see no savings on the waste reduction, and we'd only be seeing the increase on the labor to sort, you know, waste or to clean, you know, silverware, clean other materials. And so, actually, Jim Churchill and I are meeting with a number of the city council members over the coming month to try and get them out to our sites to take a look at how positive the program is at Mayor Monti and Myers Oaks, to help them have a city initiative that matches the county.
I knew you had this.
And actually, Andy and I had a meeting, was it last year already? Because I was looking at that sixty-five thousand, and I had talked to, I know there was a, a grant program in Santa Barbara where they were actually bringing in, they were retraining staff, they were creating sort of highly desirable lunches, right? So teachers were saying, well, why, why would I go out for lunch if I can get a really nice soup and salad and for three dollars on campus? And just the, you know, and so they ended up really sort of changing their bottom line by, but the, I think that program spent like a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's the Orfle Foundation, and it was a very significant investment, both in training, but more so in actual equipment changes and in change, changing the layout of cafeterias to where they became more, you know, you know, reducing the number of steps necessary to be, you know, optimizing the, just the operation of the kitchen. And so, what's exciting is that we do have a little bit of an opportunity to do that, you know, the silver lining of the health department saying that if we don't make a few changes quickly, they will potentially be writing us up. We are looking at some significant changes at Topa Topa this summer and a number of the other kitchens in the summers to, to follow. And so, to gain compliance with health code requirements, we're going to have to be doing about ninety-five percent of the changes anyway that we're talking about would help us go toward that direction. So, we are looking at really, you know, revamping and improving the kitchen at Topa Topa, and hopefully that will help us be able to do a little bit more of what, what we talked about last year.
Where do those funds come from?
That's Measure J. Yeah, the, the health depart, health department was, you know, health department sanctions was one of the areas that we prioritized. You know, it's so challenging, have roofs leaking on children, or health department saying they'll lock a, a gate to a pool, or close the, the kitchen in a school. And so, that's right now where we're prioritizing, is making sure the health department doesn't close a cafeteria. Not for, they don't have the slightest concern about actually, again, food safety for our students, but we just are simply out of compliance with too many of the most recent regulations.
Jay, man, or Jack, if you guys are ever, have a chance to see Metellaha or Nordoff, the two sites I'm most familiar with, at snack or lunch, they're actually, at Nordoff, they've had to implement new policies, there's no staff allowed in the kitchen because during those lunches, you see twenty-five, twenty-five over forty-four teachers would go grab lunch. The food really, Sonia Johnson at Nordoff does top-notch. The food there is by far and away, way better than any of the schools I've ever worked at. So that, what you're just saying is already implemented in the salads, the sandwiches, everything is really high-quality stuff.
It's great to hear.
Without doubt, the best cafeteria food I've ever seen in a high school.
Really? That's excellent, that's great to hear. We are actually, yeah, that was something that the health department actually slapped us on the wrist, or on the hand for, was having staff come in through, you know, areas that only qualified kitchen staff should be coming into. So again, when another issue they identified was concerns about the placement of two windows within the Nordoff cafeteria, we were able to kill two birds with one stone, and we're actually going to be blowing out both those windows and creating a separate actual entry point now, or not entry point, but rather a order place for staff who will come separate from where students are, that they can come and, and place an order for themselves without coming into the kitchen, which again, we can't have them do. And it also helped us eliminate the, the health code concern about the, the placement of those two windows. So, we're working on it.
Dude, hope you have answers for everyone. It's amazing. And even, there's a separate spot for you guys now to eat at lunch.
I gotta do the kids' lunch.
Yeah.
I like to get, know my kids.
Okay, I'm going to turn the page to special education.
So there were some questions about the way that we categorize staff, and so I want to make sure I give that explanation, and then we can jump into anything else. First thing was just in explaining the differentiation between certificate staff. So if you look at that first grouping of line items or costs, teacher salaries, as you'd expect, are teachers, although that does include not just special day class teachers, but any of our resource teachers as well. Pupil support salaries are our nurse, as well as our speech language pathologist. So, when you see pupil support under certificate, that's not related to instructional assistants or any of those type of positions. Pupil support is only nurse and SLP. Thirteen hundred, supervisor administrator, you can see that, I'm not even sure actually why we have that one sixty, because Jackie is currently actually coded to the nineteen hundred. So nineteen hundred, the other certificate salaries, the three people that we have in there are Jackie, Rebecca, our program specialist, and Laura, our behaviorist, behavior specialist. And then going into the, the two thousands, instructional aides, again, that is as, as you would assume it to be. The difference between instructional aides and classified support, the classified support are actually our occupational therapists. Those are classified positions, those are not certificated. Janine Murphy, our mental health clinician, that actually is a classified physician, not certificated. And then our transportation staff who transport special ed only. And then, for supervisors and administrators, I believe that's part of Janine Murphy's time that's associated with supervision of the.
Intern.
Well, it's actually, it's part of her time associated as well as the interns themselves, the intern program, the counseling intern program that we have is thirty thousand dollars.
When it's broken out like this, how much does the eleven hundred code of special education, the one point two, two million dollars, what percentage does that work out to be from the certificated, from the eleven hundred codes for all teachers?
Do you want to pull that one up? Going off memory, I think, well, actually, I'm not going off memory.
I mean, you, I agree pretty much.
I have staffing, does that include, that includes everything though, from the last budget?
Yeah, well, so.
Or does that also include?
What is the total eleven hundred for the last budget?
Well, I, I think this includes classified though, not, because it says twenty million seven seven seven.
Oh yeah, it does, yep.
Yeah.
Total.
To Pario Park.
Certificate is.
This is for the eleven hundred and plus.
Is that, that's unrestricted though, it's not including special ed. Right, right, right. So yeah, so special ed on the certificate side makes up, yeah, about, looks like fourteen, let's see, sixteen percent, sorry. Sixteen, it's about one-sixth, sixteen point six. And then on the classified side, if you look at our instructional assistants, on the, well, if you just look at classified staff relative to non-specially classified staff, it's closer to actually a fifty-fifty split. Nearly fifty percent of our classified staff are working in special ed.
Do you know how that compares to other districts?
I don't. Are you saying the fifty percent, or are you saying the teachers?
I'm talking about, well, the teachers and, so I know, I know historically, and a lot of.
Merv has got to be on the high end, you know, because.
Right.
Right, we're seeing that number.
Gradually, slightly.
Right, but, you know, if there's, I've said this a hundred times, if you can figure out a way to keep a kid out of special education.
Sure.
You're saving yourself a lot of money as a district. Once a kid gets into special education, they're more likely to stay there for the entirety of their, it's really hard. Many students don't ever exit special education, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So you have, you're getting kids, you know, before they get in there, if you can get early intervention services and stuff like that. And I'm trying to put myself out of a job, actually. Like, I really believe.
But, you know, there, there was a significant decrease this past year.
Absolutely, absolutely, there is.
If that's a forerunner of the future, we're doing, just fine.
But Andy did send me the, I mean, that included in special education are just speech.
Right, exactly. For instance, I was a special ed student, I had ten years of speech therapy, and so I think it is important.
They worked.
What'd you say?
I was in the same boat, I was a special education student with my main disability is speech.
Speech.
So, it is important for us to remember that when we talk about special education, it's not purely the, you know, special day class students who are in a, a separate standalone program. Almost all of the students in special ed are also receiving the, you know, gen ed services as well. But this could be for students, you know, we have, for our resource program, the max case though, the teacher can have is twenty-eight students. And, you know, often right now, at the elementary, it's closer to twenty, twenty-two students that they each have, that'll be working with individually to supplement what they're receiving in the, the primary class. So, I just want, you know, make sure that we are aware that, you know, special ed, and I know everyone here is, but for those watching at home, that special ed is far more than, you know, standalone special education classrooms.
But it's still, I mean, four and a half million dollars is what we're spending on staff. That doesn't even get into our books and supplies.
Sure.
And services and.
Right.
Tuition.
Yeah, and I'd like to talk about that.
Right, I mean, that's obviously what jumps out.
So. So tuition is, let me just actually, before I explain what it is, give kudos to Merv because Merv and his program is responsible for this number being about two hundred thousand dollars less than it would have been this year. Tuition is the cost of sending our students to regional programs or to typically county-run programs. And so the reason when we do that is when a student has either such severe needs or unique needs. So, you know, we don't have a deaf and hard-of-hearing, you know, standalone class here, so if we had a student who required, you know, a separate special day class for DHOH, they'd be going to a counting program. When we have students with severe emotional disturbance, we don't have the ability to provide the, you know, best environment for their education here. We send them to a regional program with hopes of having them, of course, come back as soon as possible. So the, the new program that we have at Nordoff, there were a number of students who, if we had not have the functional skills component, would have likely had have been referred out to a regional program. And the cost varies significantly depending on the actual class itself, but the estimate that we had on the students who are in Merv's program would have been roughly fifty thousand dollars a student. So by Merv taking on that program and us investing about sixty thousand dollars in the renovation of the classroom, it was a, you know, a first-year savings of two hundred thousand dollars.
Great.
And more importantly, we have our own kiddos in our school as opposed to having to, you know, leave the valley.
So that number, does that number also include the money we pay to private schools?
No, so tuition, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe tuition listed here would be for private schools. So the non-public schools is listed separately in the fifty-one-hundred, that's the sub-agreements for services.
It's really small.
We have, yeah, very, very few students who, we're actually paying, you know, or the special ed costs associated with sending them to a, a private school. Now, we do have a reduction in our revenue, if you remember, we've talked about this one in the past as well. The federal revenues actually were required to have a prorate portion go to the private schools who are educating the children in the, you know, whose district of residence would be OHA-unified. And so we don't actually cut them checks. What we do instead is we give them, you know, services. So it might be actually sending a speech therapist to their school to provide speech services, maybe having them come to a training that we're putting on, and so we might have Villanova staff coming to our, our program, and that's helping offset the federal revenues that they need to receive. But we do have an actual reduction in federal revenues as a result of private school placements.
And my question about that is, I mean, who determines that that child is special ed and that they deserve the payment? And is there any checkup that the child hasn't been removed from that program? I mean, do we ever say, you know, we're spending this money and we're losing ADA, but that's not really a special ed kid, they're just claiming that they are?
So, lot to that question, a whole lot to that question. I'll try and answer the easier part first and then we'll get into the bulk. So a student who's attending a regional program, we're still collecting ADA on. So the only student who we're losing, and even the non-public school placements, again, that's separate from what we're talking about of just a student who's enrolling in Villanova. That's very, the non-public school placement, you're seeing the thirty-two thousand, that's for very, very specialized, special education programs. So again, you know, when I worked up at the county, you know, it was not unusual to see for mental health placements, you know, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar a year placements, to have a student go to Utah for a special, you know, program for, that, you know, really is able to give them, again, the best opportunity for success, given their, their condition. So this is not simply paying for a student who could be attending Nordoff to go to Villanova. Villanova is receiving some of our special ed dollars, but again, that's only coming out as a reduction in revenue, it's not coming out as a, you know, fifty-one-hundred expense. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we're not losing revenue, but now here's, the bigger question is, you know, how do we identify a student for special education services and then once they're identified, you know, what causes them to progress to, you know, heightened levels of intervention or heightened levels of, of services? And actually, maybe, maybe you'd be best qualified.
Quick distinction, just to make sure everyone's clear on what a non-public school is versus a private school. A private school would be a Villanova, Thatcher, OVS. A non-public school is something where my kiddo, like my students, would have gone to a county program. For students at the county, their specialization services can't handle, they extend into a non-public school. So there's a hierarchy. So there'd be district, county, non-public school. A private school is where a student with a speech impediment, where, or something like that, where they would be collecting in district ADA, chooses to send Villanova. We're, as a district, are still responsible for providing them a date for their speech and language pathology, to help them with articulation or something like that.
Just from the federal revenues, there's no, no requirement at the state level for state special ed dollars or our general fund dollars to go to that, but there is a requirement for a portion of the federal.
And also under special ed is our autistic children, right?
What's that?
Our autistic children are...
Our children with autism.
But not like ADD or, or those IEPs, I mean, those kids?
So there's twelve, twelve eligibilities that you can qualify under, under special education. There's actually thirteen now, the thirteenth is rarely used. And so if you meet any of those criteria, if it's, and if you have a disability that impedes your academic progress is how you enter special education. So a child can have autism, but not qualify for an IEP because his or her skills are further, further along, you know, or they might be way smarter than the average, they're ahead of the curve. So having a diagnosis of autism or any disability does not mandate that you receive special education requirements, where the special, where you enter special education is where the deficits become more than one standard deviation. So thirteen, so about thirteen percent of the, if you're, if you're thirteen percent behind your average cohort, then that's when you, and you have a disability is where you would be qualifying for a special education service. So we look at math scores, reading scores, independently, for my program, it's mostly, we don't even look at this, we look at, are they safe, or can they take care of themselves? Do they have independent, can they access the community safely and independently? A lot of communication, obviously with autism and non-verbal, non-verbal disabilities. So that's how, and there is a regimen, so every three years, IDEA mandated to every three years, you retest and reassess students. And if the assessments show that you're making progress, you can actually exit students. And we've rare, but it's hard for a student, it's, it's hard to exit a student and also not have a parent that's completely bonkers. So you kinda have to weigh that, bonkers is not...
We're so on board.
Once you have, once you have, once a parent, it seems like, once a parent has a student in special education and they see that level of support and individualized instruction, they wanna keep them there. So removing them from special education, you're gonna find yourself, you might find yourself in due process hearings and litigation from admin kids, or somebody, so the district has to weigh, is it worth, is it worth the chances of a student litigation versus just saying, okay, well, you can have research-directed studies or something, or something along that line. So it really is, it's not, it's no clear line, you, each case is individualized based on the student's history and the student's academic performance and deficits and specific needs. Honors.
That was actually very good.
Yeah, yeah.
After your explanation, it was very appropriate.
I'm sure some journalists are saying that.
The only thing I'd add is that I've, this, you know, the amount of money that we spend on really out-of-district placements is extraordinarily small. And part of it, not all of it, part of it is because of Jackie's expertise, working with the attorney we have specifically in special education. You know, we, we've never taken a position that was, you know, marginal from a legal standpoint, but we've been pretty aggressive about dealing with families, and you use the term mental health. The one, as I've seen this evolve over the years, the one thing that I have found to be disconcerting, I'll say, is when the predominant problem facing the parents and the child is not educational. It has to do with interactions within the home and can be, might be mental health-related, might not be that strong, it might be just that they're just not getting along, right? And then as years have gone on, some parents have looked to the school district to shoulder the burden of educating that child in a special placement away from home, right? And more often than not, you end up coming up with some compromise to pay what is the equivalent of the educational cost component, and the parents or some other agency, sometimes a state mental health agency, will pick up the cost of the non-educational program. So I, I'm really pleased with where we are now. There was a point in time where we had zero placements, and I, I know we're well under five at any point.
NPS? We're at one right now, correct?
Yeah, okay, so I've seen it rotate, one, two, three, four, five, I thought we were down.
Yeah, no, we definitely are down.
We're down to one.
Exactly, yeah, that's, and that's terrific.
But I, I looked at the data two, two years ago, I think when I started doing my master's thesis. If you look at the cohort, if you look at the grade levels that are enrolled in special education, it seems to be that cohort that was most affected in the first and second grade during the Great Recession in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we had to really bump up class sizes. So then those kids were not able to get the individualized attention.
That's true.
Thirty-six, thirty-six kids per, per a teacher in first grade, they weren't talking basic fundamentals of learning, literacy, social, social skills, turn-taking, all, all those kind of things, that when, when you enter the third grade and you're really starting to get the standards and having to know how to read to access curriculum, and those deficits haven't been addressed. So I really, really love the trend that we see, but also to take it as a lesson to know where we, if we, we could easily find ourselves spending a lot more money on special education again unless we have strong SST referral processes, strong interventions, and, you know, we can do, if we have those in place, we can absorb larger class sizes. I'm not sure that those, those systems were in place prior to the Great Recession to address the needs of specific learners before they entered special education. So we're seeing them move through, they're currently the ninth and tenth graders, who are, yeah, I think you'll see the biggest cohort in, in our special education. And that was two years ago, so when I did that research, they would have been seventh, eighth grader, or sixth and seventh graders. You're seeing the cohort move through.
What about the professional consultant? It's not a huge number, but I'm not quite, since we have all this staff up here, the outside programs are covered under tuition, won't we be covered under that fifty-eight-hundred?
Various things, so Melissa Hatch is the attorney that we use for special ed matters, she would be someone to be under there. Well, we do have trainings, there are times that we are bringing in staff for training. The, let's see, can you think of?
Let's see what.
Yeah, yeah.
Say that again?
Dr. Tammy Van Leeuwen. It's, she's a PhD in what my wife, so when my, when my wife consults with her and when someone must develop...
But it was a lot higher before we had your wife doing it.
Exactly. Thank you.
It was much more, much more of Tammy than we have now.
I don't know how his brother's...
Just look at, for gold, put a five in there, because that's gonna be special ed.
Laura's, his wife is not a consultant, she's a teacher in the district.
So it's, yeah. Yeah, I'm not seeing anything large jump out, it's just an aggregate of...
Just various, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have fifty-eight, dude, just five, that might help us. No, yeah, yeah, five, perfect.
Are we talking about the debt service line there?
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, so it looks like actually...
Is it allocated in Measure J?
Where we now, which one are we on?
Seventy-one-hundred.
But that actually created huge difference.
I have no idea what debt service is, especially with this.
Just wondering maybe, yeah.
Debt service would be the special ed bus that we got. It's the same thing, same thing mentioned actually in transportation as well, so some of these expenditures you might see cross over, but it's the exact same amount from transportation because it's that bus five-five-two that we're leasing.
So, so this is not zero sum, some, some, some numbers show up in two spots because it's transportation, but it's also special ed?
Correct. When we're looking at these department budgets, yeah, special ed is gonna be definitely overlapping with transportation.
Cool.
Absolutely. Yeah, so again, in the twenty-two-hundred, for instance, of special ed, that's including some van drivers who'd also be listed in transportation.
Got it.
Yep. I could certainly pull out though, to make sure they're not...
So if you, if you added up all the pages, you come up with more, what is this, right?
Fifty-eight, fifty, the first twenty-five thousand of any contract can be forty-eight.
Sure, sure.
Okay, page six, technology budget. Any questions there?
Why aren't we spending more?
Hey, compared to five years ago, this is great.
Yeah, I mean, no question, huge, huge improvement. You will see, if I'd pulled this information for, you know, ten years ago, you would not see that great of a change, actually. And from a staffing standpoint, or even from a, you know, equipment standpoint, and so I would say that, you know, our technology department has changed considerably. David's not here anymore, but, you know, we now have, latest number he gave me was somewhere around sixteen-hundred devices that are the, you know, Chromebooks or tablets, and not including the actual, you know, computers that we have for staff and that sort of thing. So we, we're actually not terribly far away from a one-to-one ratio, and all of that's happened the past few years. And so incredible increase in, you know, demands, both from a technology infrastructure standpoint, from hardware, software, yet we really don't see that staffing has changed that, that significantly from, you know, a decade ago when it was not nearly, nearly the same way.
What is the communications fifty-nine-hundred?
That's our internet connection.
We should do away with that. I don't see any reason for that. Just get postal service in, I don't think.
Right, right.
Okay, then, any other questions on technology? We already did transportation, so now we're at just the general object code, total non-personnel at the second interim, four million, two fifty-one, three twelve, sixteen percent of the budget.
So this, again, there is gonna be overlap between those prior departments except for child nutrition services, which is a separate fund, but this is a general fund, both restricted and unrestricted. So everything else in those prior pages also is included here if it was a non-personnel expense. I just wanna give different ways to view the information.
So Andy, would you say, you were saying earlier, Rob, when Jenny asked the question, eighty-four to eighty-six percent, would it be too simple or would it be accurate to use this page to get to eighty-four percent?
It would be accurate.
Yeah.
Good enough for government work, yeah.
Bring them into this.
So if you, if you look at, actually, if you do the, the math on the adopted budget, then total non-personnel divided by total general fund budget, you'll see that number is fourteen percent, which is why, remember publicly, previously we'd say that we're at eighty-six percent, and that's where that came from. If you did the math now on the second interim, you'd see that it's sixteen percent of expenditures is the non-personnel, and so that's why I said earlier that we're now at eighty-four percent. The reason for that change, though, as we've talked about already, is almost, you know, exclusively, or if not exclusively, significantly attributable to the CTE grants that must be going toward the non-personnel side.
Back on the, on the forty-three-hundred line.
Right, right, exactly. The other, the reason I would say good enough for government work and not exactly that is simply because there are a few weird situations where we might have a, what everyone would perceive to be a staff member paid out of this account, for instance, Sean Walker, when he's doing either board policy work for us or overseeing the merit system, he's actually paid as an independent contractor under the fifty-eight-hundred object code. And so there are a few people who I would still group as our staff who are, you know, in this, this grouping, but it's not, not enough to make a, you know, difference of real relevance.
So we're doing adopted, excuse me, we're doing adopted budget in a second, excuse me, second interim in a week, and we looked at forty-three-hundred, that, that constitutes, you know, four hundred plus thousand dollar increase.
And donations would be the other big reason of why that changed, as Patrick said earlier.
The two that you mentioned, forty-four-hundred, what would, what would cause that to have gone up a hundred and fifty thousand?
So that's primarily Chromebooks. So we may put a object code in the forty-three-hundred to start the year, and then because we tag our Chromebooks, forty-four-hundred, even though it's described as equipment over five hundred dollars, if we tag, the state requirement is that you tag equipment over five hundred, we wanna tag, which, when I say tag, I just simply mean literally putting a physical tag on that piece of inventory or that asset, and then putting it into our system and tracking where it is. So right now, David could actually, you know, look up these tag numbers and identify that, you know, these ten Chromebooks are in this classroom at this site. you know, these 10 Chromebooks are in this classroom at this site, plugged in or not even, he actually has that ability. So that's the great majority, is there anything else that you can see that really drove up that 4,400?
No, the Chromebook purchases was.
So, and the Chromebooks were not just coming from district funding, but also OEF funded a number of those purchases as well. And so they were not in at first interim, or they were not in adopted, but they are at second interim now. And so just a reminder, again, anytime we start walking through these numbers, I instantly start in my mind thinking how I could have better presented things. It may have been better to actually have had first interim as well. This is actually your first glimpse at second interim at this time. I just wanted to give you the most recent, you know, best numbers I could. But you're looking at numbers that may look like, wow, this is a huge jump from a budget adoption. But if I had first interim here, you'd see that first interim actually already had included this. So it's not, you know, it's not that we're jumping here in March, it is that you're looking at, you know, the adoption to now.
But most of that, most of that million dollar difference from June to March, I think, occurred in January, right? So when you're talking about first interim, so the bigger, the bigger jump was from adopted, adopted to first interim.
Certainly, certainly the bigger jump is adopted to first.
From first to second, right Patty? Yeah, I don't have a number.
On the non-personnel side, that's absolutely correct.
Sure.
Personnel side, it's because of the budget increase that occurred, budget enhancement, or the salary enhancement, sorry, for OT.
So the other big jump is 5,200, travel and conferences.
I believe, again, if we looked at first interim, that you would not see that was such a large jump. And I believe that the two funding sources for that are really the educator effectiveness grant.
Remember that big, that big number we had to spend? Yeah, why don't you explain that again? There was, it was a hundred thousand dollar block that we had to spend over a couple of years in that educator, in the educator effectiveness.
So educator effectiveness was actually closer to 200,000. It was about 67,000 per year over a three-year span. That came out of our governor, or the final approved budget for 2015, 16. Governor made the one-time allocation that, again, is actually, it's supposed to be spent over that three-year span. So we did not have our full plan in place at the start of the year as to how we were going to use those dollars. This year, they're heavily restricted, highly restricted. There's four permissible expenditures, or types of expenditures that you can use the funding for. And actually, one of the funding, or one of the ways that we use that funding this year was the 12 stipends that we paid to the curriculum pilot teachers. So staff development and those sorts of things would be the difference. And so when it comes to the staff development, or sending them off to training, or having the, you know, trainers come here, it may be code there. For 5,200, we also would see the change because of Title I. So Title I, if you recall, we found out after budget adoption, although again, this was included at first interim, that there was a new, new year of census information that was being used by the federal government to identify or allocate Title I dollars. The very unfortunate news is that our valley went up from having about 16% below the poverty line to about 21% for their measure. And so as a result, even though it wasn't necessarily saying that our student population had increased, in fact, we've seen a slight decrease over the past couple of years. But the valley as a whole has had more people fall into the poverty line. And so they now are allocating more Title I dollars to us, which is going, which is really dollars focused on services for low-income students. And so some of that money is going towards staffing, including actually the bridge that we have had until hopefully the college block grant will be approved next week. But that bridge period of having the library hours extended, we've been using actually Title I dollars for that. And we've been finding a number of creative ways to try to expand services this year using those new Title I dollars.
The report, the report that we look at a week from today on second interim, will have adopted budget and first interim and second interim, or not?
It will be comparing first interim to, to second. So it shows the changes from the most recent budget that you approved to the new revision.
Is a sheet like this typically been part of our package?
No, no, that was only I put together.
This is so powerful.
Yeah, it's much better.
I mean, from now on.
Sure.
Never, you know, this is just so great. And really, and not only is it great for us, but it really is great for the constituents. When someone can actually look at this and go, okay, you know? I don't think you should spend that much on rubbish, and it's an English word, why would you?
The only, I can't top that one. The only thing you might want, and this is just my own view of stuff in general, is some words. You know, so there, where you have, where you have a line item that is not perfectly evident.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Unlike rubbish.
That's because you've got history background.
I do, I like words.
Mask people, we know words.
I like, I like, you know, like a key or something like that.
Well, but if there's a variance more than 10%, for example, a note to explain.
Or that, okay. Well, right, exactly, because every, you know, starting with Jane a while ago, a couple of years ago now, you know, you always come back to donations, you know, why are they not there now and then they're here, and that, that kind of thing. So, and so, right, you know, 300 plus thousand dollar increase would be a good reason to explain why they're not in there, right, in June? Okay, yeah, as we found out.
Oh, absolutely. Right, right, which, yeah, normally what we do at the, you know, when budget comes to the board is you'll be looking at the current version that we're asking to be approved, so whether that's adopted, first interim, second interim, third, and then the most recent prior version. So typically, you know, next week, you would have been seeing second interim compared to first. You would not have been seeing another glimpse at budget adoption at that time. I just.
You shouldn't have put it in there.
Yeah, probably shouldn't have.
One mistake, we found one mistake!
Judgment call.
The equipment at the bottom, the equipment over 5,000 is 75,000 dollars, is that?
Two vans. So we purchased the wheelchair van that we discussed back in September. That was at a cost of nearly $50,000. And actually, we just purchased a second van about a month ago. Not a wheelchair van, just a regular transit van. We, again, going back to Cindy and the incredible job that everyone has done back in transportation this year, have had to actually rent from Enterprise vans on a number of occasions. Our rentals were well over last year's number in January for this. We'd already exceeded the entire amount we'd spent last year in January from having our vans down. And we were looking at, because of staffing shortage, as well as having our vans down, that we just couldn't continue that program. And then we had one of our vans have their transmission go out. Their transmission or engine. One went out and the other, our mechanic said is going to go out any day. So the repair was going to be 4,000, 5,000, but then the other repair was going to be, the engine, I believe, was going to be about 7,800 on it. He said, maybe that was the all-in cost on both. But we were looking at a cost of nearly $10,000 and a number of weeks without a van. And so Cindy did an incredible job of actually shopping a number of dealers off one another, got a great price, and then I still refused to approve it because it was too much. And so then she went and found a few more used ones. And so we actually got an incredible van, used, had 6,000 miles on it, a 2015, but was, you know, a very high-end model for bargain price relative to, you know, a new price stock was going to be 32. Used with 30,000 stock, we were looking at a price of 25, and she was able to find this one for 22 or 23 up in Boulton. So she made a trip up to Boulton to, to get the van for us. But, actually, no, I apologize, she did not go, they came down here for us. So, yeah, so that was the, the second vehicle, is that we got a second used van. But went from having a van that had 300,000 miles on it, 280, down to now 6, so we're excited.
So Andy, the 5,800, the professional services, thank you. I've been, I'm always the one harping on this one, and it's so, it's like, okay, I'm not going to harp on it as much. I mean, I don't think I, I mean, I wrote you a couple of questions. None of it, I mean, you answered it, and.
One question that came up after these materials went out, that I think is really important, is actually, as I just opened up to page nine, the first page of 4,300, you'll see Alicia Hicks listed there. And then if you're looking in the 5,800, you'll see a lot of things like Montessori preschool, or Noah's Ark, or, you know, the Monica Ross, the other preschools around town. So when we talk about that 5,800 object code, or this 4,300, having lots of things that make up this number, one of them is almost all of the expenditures associated with OBNFL, which is, it's a $200,000 a year budget, are hitting one of those two numbers. That revenue is coming exclusively from first five. District makes no contribution financially to the program. We instead offer in-kind services, and primarily that is, you know, Alicia's office, telephone line, you know, internet access, and then my time to supervise, and some of Patty's time to assist with the, you know, reimbursement process. We actually do generate revenue off the program because we're able to charge an indirect charge for the rest of the business office's time. And so we get about $16,000 a year from the neighborhood for learning to compensate for the time that, you know, the payroll folks are processing Alicia's payroll, or some of the sub-time sheets, that sort of thing, but.
So despite seeing all these charges.
None of it's actually coming out of, it's coming out of general fund. It's coming out of unrestricted general fund, but we actually, it's heavily restricted, could never be using NFL dollars for a district initiative.
If you, if you look at page 19, you'll see my name on there several times, or.
Don't be defensive.
Those come from an OEF grant that I was awarded from last year.
Right, exactly.
Or the donation where Wemark sold succulents and raised $250, but we had to spend, it was $50 in materials to get. So I, just to read it, just to give, put a face on the actual expenditures, like some of these are, the monies are not budgeted in June, that come from OEF grants.
Exactly, exactly.
So then I just have to ask, canine detection services, are we losing dogs?
Yeah, five times a year, it's $250 per time, so it should be a total of 1250 that we end up paying them. They come in and do drug, you know, drug sniffing dogs will inspect the campus.
But that whole, that whole system has changed in the last two years. It used to be much more invasive. And civil rights groups, quite appropriately, have said, student, any student needs to be able to opt out of participating. And so, but our kids are great, you know, and they, they laugh about it a little bit. But I have to say, we, we have detected some things that we would have wanted to detect. And they're not always that smart either. They like, they say, they leave their, you know, backpack here when they could have taken it there, and the dog smelled it there and, and ended up in the D's office.
I agree, I think we got a great, great bunch of kids. My feelings with the canine is very well, very good visual deterrent.
Isn't it?
Great students who pick up on it more, maybe we shouldn't do that. So it's maybe not as effective of catching, but it also, they're highly visible on campus once a month or so. And I think it's, I think there's arguments.
When the police leave the car, you know, leave the car next to the road, that kind of thing, it has that kind of, has that kind of mental image, it has a mental image.
So if, just going back to some of the types of expenditures, again, 4,300, we mentioned this when looking at maintenance and operations, but here's a chance to actually, again, see another, you know, face to the expenditures.
What page?
Is on page 18 and 19, where we, I think you likely are, based on, we're pointing there. You see a whole lot of Myers, Myers Oaks Ace Hardware. And you can see that, you know, the majority of this is that when our grounds or maintenance teams have to go over for a, you know, a quick repair, they're going there, but when you see the instructional materials line item, you would not think that, you know, a plumbing valve at Myers Oaks would be grouped in that same category as a teacher supply reimbursement, but that is the nature of California school accounting code.
In little things, you know, you wonder if some of that, I mean, I guess it's nice to go local, but you might be able to save some money if you had more anticipated these expenses and, you know, did it through some more wholesale sort of environment. I wanted to ask, California Construction Management, that was, that's under the 5,800, what are they doing?
So they're helping us with DSA closeout. The expenditure, yeah.
Are we in the Measure J these?
What's that?
Are these Measure J?
Yeah, they're Measure J. Yeah, so I did not actually, I don't believe with these, I pulled out general fund only. I think I was actually querying just based on the object code. So you may be seeing it in the general fund currently, but also I know that we did have a little bit of a mix-up with business office earlier in the year with charging some of CCM's invoices to general fund, and then they pulled it out after the FAFD. And so it is in general fund now, or it's in the Measure J for sure.
And then, what are we, obviously it's not our total internet access cost, but there's a VCOE cost for internet access. What's that? As compared to the, under the technology budget, there's like a.
Communication.
A much bigger.
Yeah, so we actually, great question. So we, we have Time Warner and we have VCOE as the two internet, primary internet expenditures. Time Warner is providing the paths, the, you know, the highway. And VCOE is actually providing the internet itself. So we are, the district office is the hub, that the internet connection that we receive, that, you know, when any staff member is hopping on the internet at any of our campuses, we're getting our access to the internet through VCOE. That channel exists, and we're receiving the, you know, the actual service and connection through them. From us, Time Warner has the pathways that sends that link out to the sites. And so that's the way, we actually have two separate internet expenses or costs. But it's a matter of the Time Warner providing the fiber and VCOE providing the actual internet, so.
And so presumably the ISP through VCOE is cheaper than if we did it on our own?
Well, that's historically been the case, but given that VCOE actually has been the cause for a number of our most recent outages that we've experienced across the district, and David just is taking a fresh, you know, set of eyes to everything. He is actually going out right now to bid to see if we can find it cheaper away from VCOE, both obviously to save money, as well as to try to limit the number of outages that we experience when, you know, VCOE is slammed because of another, you know, site or another issue.
Where's the city get theirs?
I don't know that, I can try.
Anything else?
I have a question about all the Amazon, kind of odd question. I just noticed there's a ton of Amazon.
Oh, absolutely.
I wonder how difficult it is, or if we can use Amazon Smile instead and get my bet from Amazon.
That's an excellent idea. I know that OEF is on Amazon Smile. I don't know that they'd allow school districts to be on there, do you know if we're currently on there?
Well, the PTA at TOPA's on there.
Okay, right, so exactly, yeah, PTA, and OEF, and that sort of thing. I don't know that districts are able to. But regardless, I love the idea, and I, we will start doing Smile dot Amazon.
God, I always forget it.
Yeah, I do too.
So while we're under that.
Can you, let yourself, or let Kathy, no.
One of the things I was talking about to Andy, and it's sort of a future discussion, I think, when we start talking about our budget, March and April, is I, one of the things that came out to me was.
What page is that?
Page nine, just as an example, elementary music supplies. And if you go through, you sort of see elementary music, and then you see other music, you know, music, music, music. So I said it'd be interesting, and it's a lot of work, so we're going to try to decide how to not, maybe not do that. But I would love to say, here's what it's costing us to have a program that we really value, and that is a program that I know people have stayed in our district for our music program. And then we can say, well, guess what? We are another program that we are interested as a board, as a school district, in implementing or shoring up even more is this. And we can see it's going to cost us money, but what is the value of it? If we just sort of use the music program as a, an example of something that we have that is dynamite. And if we, if we have feelings, or the community has feelings and comes forward, I use as an example, we have great AP classes. But what if we didn't, and people said, hey, let's focus on getting some AP classes? Or, you know, let's, well, like Kim did, let's focus on improving a dance program. I know I would love more hours of college placement help at Nordoff. I'd love that. So as we talk about a budget and talk about our desires, where we're choosing to spend money and why, to think about the cost of a program, I mean, I don't know if there's another way to do it, except, I mean, without saying that our music program costs us. another way to do it, except, I mean, what about Santa Fe Music Program costs us? We know we have three, 2.8 FTEs.
2.6, 2.6.
You know, I think another thing along those lines is looking at, looking at revenue ideas, where they're not all worth chasing down, but if we could, as a community, brainstorm and just, you know, develop a list to look into as they come along, like, you know, we've had a good, we had a benefit when a film crew came and made a movie here. If we had a casting agent for our facilities, could that bring in more revenue for us, or, or other benefits for us, you know, is, that's something we wanna look at.
Look what happened to the actors.
Yeah, we're responsible.
See, I mean, we, we should take responsibility.
Yeah.
And she almost was part of the movie that won the best picture, for like, for like, three minutes, for three minutes, and then she realized she wasn't.
So, I mean, there are things like that, and then, online education, are we doing all we can do? You know, there are whole, if we encourage flu shots, would that increase our ADA, you know, during flu season? I don't know, you know, but...
I never, I never thought I'd hear that one. I heard some really interesting theories about increasing revenue from the 7-Eleven committee. I did not hear that one.
I would say, just, I know this is silly, but just spending time cleaning tables, that's huge.
You know, when we were in Bangladesh...
Just wiping things down with a disinfectant would, and I do it every day, but I think it would eliminate, like, I love the February break because everybody gets sick between January and that February break, and they're horribly sick, so I, and it sounds silly, but I had kids out like crazy for the last...
Yeah, actually, that's true.
It's absolutely...
It's just a focus time of, okay, we're not going to vacuum, except for this, you know, once a week or whatever, and the rest of the time we're wiping everything down, I bet it would be a phenomenal change.
When we were in Bangladesh, they, outside, medical consultants would come in, and they said, if we could get doctors to wash their hands in between seeing patients, it would cut disease down by an enormous percent.
They don't have to do that. Why, I thought they had to do that?
Hi?
You're an American.
Well, and one of my hopes is that we, we, and I, I think I expressed this to you, is that I feel like, because of the financial situation we've been in, it's always been, here's the money we have, how are we gonna spend it? And I'd love, at this point, to go, what do we wanna do? Oh, and how are we gonna pay for it? Like, let's talk about what we wanna do without the money hanging, you know, and then say, okay, well, we, we can't do that, what, what can we do to get there? Which is what you're talking about, what are those ideas for revenue to get us to this goal that we wanna have?
And I made the point that some of them are crazy.
Is that where you argue against yourself, that one?
But, but some of those crazy ones might pan out.
And I'd be curious about a grant writer, you know, would hiring a grant writer pay off in the long run?
Well, if you put them on commission, then it does.
Exactly.
You know, I also like to encourage everyone to seek out as many community partnerships as possible, I mean, we've gotten, with just my program alone, we've got Chase Bank who allows, we, our kids are there twice, twice a week to do transact, simple transactions, I mean, the community will come out and support, but sometimes we're just not asking them explicitly, like, we want your help. The Spring Musical, how many people from the Ohio Valley are gonna see how great Nordoff's music and drama programs are, and theater programs are? I mean, those, those events are hard, but this, you know, anything that we can do to bring the community into our schools is only gonna strengthen the ties, then we can lean on them, you know, we can show them what, what they value, whether, if we, in five years from now, if we ask them for a parcel tax, we can say, look at all the great things that you have seen us do in your community, even if you don't have kids. You know, it's a kid, the 2,600 students' families are, for the most part, pretty involved in your schools. It's reaching the other, you know, the other 12,000 people in the Ohio Valley, outside the, outside city limits, that really is what's gonna be the strength and the pillars as we move forward, as we start to see an aging community, you know, we're still gonna see declining enrollment for a few more years and kind of bottom out, but really, we need to lean on the community, and I think they'll be more willing to support us if we go out and show them what their value, what the value we are offering them as a community is.
And I kinda like connecting Shelley and Jane's ideas in the sense of, if we look strategically where we wanna put our efforts, then that guides the grant writers and the, and the community at large, too, because, I know, an old, an old business guy I used to work with, used to say grants are other people's ways of getting you to pay attention to what's important to them, so you don't wanna chase money just for chasing it, but if we know where we wanna emphasize, and obviously we can't do everything every year, but just to use your example, it's the same music, right, and if we decided that music was a strategic focus of the district, then that would give our grant writer some, some, you know, parameters for what to look for that fit in with where we wanna be, it starts to make, it starts to make sense that way. Kind of interesting, yeah.
Or to pick the things that free up some of our budgets so that we can focus on...
So that we can focus on other stuff, right, right, right.
I have a question, Andy.
Yeah.
There's nesting waters, tradition nesting waters, there's, I mean, they're all sort of small amounts, but there's two solid pages of that, what is that?
That water bottle right there, water jug.
So, don't we have at most schools a water, is water dispensing now?
Hydration stations.
Hydration stations, uh, yeah.
So, I, I mean, it's nice to walk into the staff room and fill my water bottle, but isn't the hydration station doing the same thing? I mean, right? So I'm just wondering, why are we not saying, why are we not saying, we're gonna eliminate that?
You just love their water.
I know, but there's a hydration station, and all it means is I take, which I never do, like you, I'm not saying I'm perfect, I never turn left. Always just turn left, fill my water bottle, and instead I turn right into the staff room and fill my water bottle. But if those are gone, and you say, gosh, you got two hydration stations, use them, they were expensive, and they, you know...
And it's great water.
And it's great water, it really is great water, so I just, I'm just wondering, I think, even though it seems like not a lot of money, if you, if you add it up, you can say, well, over time, that goes to this over here, which you're, you get the water, so why...
Are you saying that the teachers will support if we pull out the staff room?
I'm saying that if they don't show up, right?
All of a sudden.
It's like, well, there's a hydration station, I mean, I, I, I'm just...
You know, we should ask, we should ask Laura Van Acker to figure out a little bit of organizational behavioral management. How do you make it more desirable for a teacher to go to a hydration station than to go to the teacher's lounge and get the, the more expensive water, when it's basically the same thing? I bet she would have five ideas for you all to tell her, Tom.
Yeah.
And I'm not joking, tell her I have some, she got a whole plate, but let's fill it up.
Creepy.
She really knows how to manage behavior, not only your students, but your organizations.
I am saying that, it's silly, I, I don't, I actually don't get it. We put the hydration stations in, are they at all the schools? If they're there, then why are we paying for these guys to show up and put it in our staff room? The only reason we do it, maybe, is for hot water, maybe, so you get a little kettle for every, every staff room, and you say, here's your electric kettle, use the kettle. And we switched it out, everybody, you, you get a hydration station and the kettle. And it's simple as that, you get this?
Environmentally, too, I mean, it's hauling a lot of water.
Environmentally, it's so different.
Petroleum use for the...
The hydration station every school?
The whole thing is better.
Uh, actually, I don't know.
It's a small, it's a...
Is it other than seven?
What's that?
Other than seven?
Well...
I know, I know there are increases.
We all have one here, yeah, Cheperal doesn't have one, but...
But all the others?
And I'm not sure if at the high school in junior high, they're terribly conveniently placed for teachers.
Right, that's one of the challenges, yeah, exactly, gymnasium.
They're in the gym, and...
Chuck, anyway.
Well, okay, so, but at TOPA?
TOPA, yeah.
I'm sorry, I could probably sell it.
It's all you do.
I'll get people mad at me, but I'm cap. I'll just use the environmentally conscious look, come on. But things like that, I mean, I really think that if we're going to look at the budget, then we need to start looking at, at all, all of those things, you can't, it, it, because every little bit counts, I mean, this would be an instructional aid for my classroom, that's what I look at, I look at all these numbers and say, oh, there's an instructional aid for my classroom, get rid of the water bottle thing, and I'll take the instructional aid. And I think each little thing like that, that benefits the kids, too, it's not just benefiting me, it benefits the students, and it benefits the environment, his classroom, it's all of it.
Well, we could also use that savings to buy soap, my daughter is asking me all the time why there's no soap in the bathroom, Mom, you're on the school board, could you work on that? And that will increase our ADA, which will then...
No, it's all, it's all connected, to the same, same thing you said.
TOPA.
Really?
Are there, I'm taking her word for it, I haven't looked into it.
I mean, we certainly don't have a soap shortage, so if it's a matter of they're not being filled, then I will talk to the staff.
I don't know, she just said, oh, there's no soap. They're being filled because, I don't know, you just sit and step, and you listen to the little boy's bathroom, and it's like, that's all they know. You know, everybody has to go out and yell at them, and it's like...
Behavioral adjustment.
Visual schedule, right there.
That's why we put the boys' bathroom next to the...
Say two bombs in a race or something like that, something like that.
Check it, check it.
But it goes back, I mean, it really is all tied together, 'cause if you look at , at Miramonte, is it Chris Hes, is it Hess?
Yes.
Who does all, who basically runs a paperless classroom. It wouldn't be that hard for all of us to, you know, move that, then all of a sudden he was paying less on copiers, I mean, it really is a fundamental, I mean, it really is, comes down to small behaviors that could save significant portions, and...
I think Brenda's is pretty paperless.
Right.
I don't get any papers home.
But how much, if you go to the copy room at Nordoff, you're seeing, you see 700 schemes, and then we get an email later in the week saying, we're almost short on paper, you know, it's all, and I, I, I don't know if it's my, if my program is, isn't terribly paper-intensive, but it would be, it would, in my old program, it was much less.
Nordoff uses a lot of paper, just a lot of copies.
Again, there's this...
Is that a curriculum issue, is that because we don't, the things that, the materials that are being provided aren't in textbooks, so they're making a lot of...
It's a lot of tests.
Not knowledgeable.
A lot of, a lot of other things, a lot of, but the Google classroom, this shit, this shit, we're moving in that direction, but if we can get there faster, every penny counts, I mean, if we're talking about water bottle savings, I mean, I'm all for it, let's, let's really...
Well, those are the savings you wanna do, they don't...
Exactly, this is a low-hanging fruit, that really doesn't...
He's sort of the do-things-differently kind of things that I've been nagging Andy about, but it's these incremental things, and frankly, he can't be the only one to think of these things, right? The fact that you guys are here, kind of blue-skying, these kind of things, this needs really to be sort of a district-wide effort, because it is the little things that add up to the big, there are no big things here that, that we can play with.
We've gone through it.
Yeah. Chuck, do you wanna weigh in on water and coffee in the back?
Water is a very important issue, as the board has pointed out, and the first time I saw one of the hydration stations doors in, it cost $500. That whole page, both those pages doesn't add up to that, and I've had one employee that actually was at the hospital from a heat stroke, and I agree that water is very important, I know the door was placed on high importance, I'm good, but our current hydration stations are costing us at least $1,200 per installation, so I agree, water's important, and that $300, $400 that's listed on those pages is also for staff's health. I've seen in these meetings where people run back to this because they're choking or coughing and get a quick drink, so the application is important, and I agree, if that was a cost saver, from my perspective, the application, that cost saving the $300. The hydration station's great, I'm glad we're doing it, and I've seen it used, I actually count those numbers, and I see at TOPA, but TOPA alone has four different generations of drinking fountains within 50 feet, and so water's always been an issue, and I'm all for it, but I don't see that as a...
Oh, it's not a fantasy, no, it's...
No, an application, just like you said, was paper, I mean, CSEA has donated paper to the schools, where's it all going? So, and that's accountability, as Andy pointed out, we can easily turn left, we also go right, get the water, so I agree that the water needs to be out there, but I'd get irritated when I see initial cost of $500 for the hydration station, great idea, somebody's gonna repay for this book, that's not out here, but in the scheme of things, it's a great tool in terms of having, but this is also a great tool.
I think the PTAs are paying for the...
Yeah, district hasn't incurred any expense related to the hydration stations.
I say currently, because if I go back to TOPA and I show you the four different drinking fountains, there's a lot of distance right in that 50 feet, the four different drinking fountains are, and I don't wanna spend your time on that, I agree, why, of course.
I mean, there's no miracles?
We are reaching the limit of our time here, we, we said we'd be two hours, is there anything major?
Great job, that was really interesting, it really was.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, thanks for the involvement, sure, thanks for the involvement, very good.
Good night, see you a week from today.